Have a silent if we could to stand for a long silence and remember what happened 13 years ago today. Fathers and mothers, brothers, sisters did not make a call that night. I think it will attend to take a moment and talk.
I hope we, Father, we do remember what happened 13 years ago today. We remember all those lives that were lost. We're still the best country in the world here. We know it's that way because of you. And we just thank you for the day that we've had today here. Thank you for the blessings you sent our way. We praise you for it. We ask you to be with this meeting. All that's done here may be according to your will. Thank you for those who are here. Make our prayer Jesus name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good boy.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Next is our consent agenda. We did add Tuesday's minutes to that, so I would ask, or I've asked that the board review those before they got here. And with that said, I will recommend that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Next, Mr. Chairman, is public comment.
Do we have anyone that wishes to make a comment, talk to the board tonight? We seem to have no one for public comment, which is certain.
All right. Next is our financial report. That's got our July financials. Of course, this was the beginning of the fiscal year for us, and we have some pretty good news. Our local sources of collection are zero percent versus zero percent for this time last year. Our total revenues were four percent versus three percent for this time last year. Our total expenditures are eight percent versus eight percent. And we completed 8.33 percent of the fiscal year, which puts us 33.33 percent below budget. So that is a healthy financial report to Mr. Chairman, and I've asked the board to approve it as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the financials? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay. One of the things that we've been proud about at our tentative budget hearing, or not tentative budget, but word hearing, where we set our tentative budget, where we set our tentative millage, is that we've got a balanced budget. The first thing we've seen in quite a while, we've been in deficit spending because of austerity reductions in the downturn economy and the issues with property digest. That said, we presented a balanced budget, and that made, and one of the reasons, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we were able to do that is because of what the SLOSS referendum was written. Most people think of SLOSS as a capital projects fund, and most surely that's what the majority of it is used for. But we also wrote in our referendum that we can purchase such things as buses, books, media materials, software, hardware, those types of things. We went through just this one year and looked at the things that were outside of capital purchases. We're not even talking about some of the small things like roofs and stuff we're just talking about. Buses, books, software. We had 1.2 million dollars that we spent on SLOSS for those different categories. I dare say we would not have had a balanced budget had we not had SLOSS to help support us. We collected this last month 418,064.65, which was for June. That is one of the largest collections since 2006, one of the months in 2006. So we have a healthy economy. We do know that how the chamber promotes our towns and our waterfalls and our creeks here in Fannin County. We have a lot of visitors coming in, and we're helping fund those things that we just talked about. So it looks like we're on track right now for SLOSS three to collect 19,427,724.84. As always, I received a timely phone call about 15 minutes before this meeting. It was Bucky Kent, and we know that Bucky has helped us with our last three SLOSS to get the referendum in order, just helped us make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is. Of course, we all know that Bucky is also a bond banker, and it's amazing to me, he has offered to help us even though we didn't purchase a single bond from him in the last SLOSS. And I told him, I said, "I'm surprised you would call and offer to help," and he said, "Well, we're hoping at some point you might get where you need some bonds." I don't, I hope not there in my time, and I don't foresee that in the reasonable future. But he is still willing to help, so he's going to come up here and meet with me at 2:00 tomorrow, and with the board's permission, we're going to start looking into the SLOSS three. Of course, I'll come back at the next meeting and share what we think about that with you, and hopefully you will give me permission to go ahead and start a referendum and look at the dates for that. So with that said, SLOSS is very important to the home system, it has made us healthy. We are one of the few school systems I know that started the recession that ended the recession with the same millage rate that we started. I think that says a lot. I think a lot of that can be attributed to how strong our SLOSS is and how many people we have coming in from out of town.
I have gotten to have a following of the Chamber of Activism. It's amazing. They have something going off all the time, just multiple things. They're a tremendous asset to this system.
They are. Of course, one of their, one of their board members is running Projector back here, of course. So she does a good job out there with them, helps, she helps promote the school to, Chamber helps the school system, the OSB, this place. They're always a good outlet when we sort of go into a SLOSS. So that requires no action. So our next item on the agenda is approve the homeless procedures, which would be the County Vento Act, and we're going to go over some of our procedures. So with that said, I'll have Mr. Kent give a presentation before, you know what I was kidding, right?
One minute, I was given one minute. That was a joke. Okay, and so now I just want to talk to you briefly about the County Vento and Homeless Assistance Act. Basically, basically, this is a federal law that defines what the school system will do to assist children that are experiencing homelessness. So it has a clear definition of what children qualify for homelessness. It does include children that are living with other families due to financial hardship. We often refer to those children as double love. So maybe I've lost my home because I've lost my job, so now I'm living with my mother. So you have two families living with house. They qualify. It includes children living in hotels, motels, campground, trailer parks. And when they stay at other parks, they really want you to think about, like, communal sports, they have that campground room for a campground setting for a week or two weeks. It's really a temporary kind of setting. It also includes children living in emergency shelters or transitional shelters. We have two shelters in the county, North Georgia Crosses Network Center that works with families that are victims of domestic violence, who have a homeless shelter up on industrial Boulevard where the Family Connection Center is. We also have a couple of houses in our community that are transition homes that are being provided through Action Ministries, an agency out of Atlanta. And those are just regular houses that house one family, but are meant to be temporary so they have caseworkers coming in to work with them, help them gain independence, gain their own residence. So they qualify for services. It includes any child that's abandoned in hospitals. Most people think about infants, you know, we have that Safe Abandonment Act where you have an infant who's often off to hospital or a fire station or places like that. But we have seen children that have been abandoned at hospitals that need medical treatment, and maybe there's not a family member that's on for any medical treatment, or you had an incident between parents, you know, and an older child get into a disqualification, the child that's at the hospital, and the parents have fled, requiring legal action. They qualify for services. Any child that's away in foster care, and that is a very vague definition. Our kids are really good at mentioning to their teachers. My defect caseworker came to my house, and so whenever they hear that, our teachers know to come and just let me know because I have a really good working relationship with Family and Children Services. So I'm always willing to call them, they're real good to work with me, and help determine if they meet that definition. It includes any children who are sleeping, are sleeping in a public or private place, not dead or naked, or intended to be abused for sleeping accommodation. A Waffle House, a Walmart that's open 24/7. I did encounter that for the first time last year. We had a hospital student that was having to stay at a Waffle House. He was from a pretty friend's house, but that particular not needed at the Waffle House. So we worked and provided services to him. So that does happen on occasion. It includes children who are living in abandoned buildings, cars, cars, public places such as bus or train stations. So that's probably more of what the definition you're used to, if they're living in a tent, living in a garage, living in a car. And any child living in substandard housing, and this is places where the floors are falling in, or there's electrical wiring, or winters broken, they don't have power, running water. It includes all of those places. But it also can include the nicest house in the county. You know, as Mr. Henderson sort of mentioned, you know, the condo was really good for us a lot for a long time. We had houses being built, people were building stack houses, and then the market bottomed out, so we had people with two or three houses, and they started losing houses. So now you may have someone that's living in the biggest house on the lake, but now they can't afford to put power in that house, they can't afford running water, they can't afford the basic utilities. So they can also qualify for homeless if they can't meet their basic needs in their residence, they qualify. And of course, any of our microthread children could meet any of those situations, also qualify for. And any child that's considered unaccompanied, so if you have a child of any age, under the age of 18, living without a parent or a legal guardian. And we see that for all ages, we have numerous grandparents that are raising grandchildren without custody. So maybe their parents, for whatever reason, have left them with a granddaughter or grandpa that raised, and there's been a custody transfer, and they qualify for those services as well. So that's just the definition of homeless. So what we're going to do to help those students, well, why we're going to help those students is because studies show that children that are in homeless situations are less likely to be successful in school, they're more likely to drop out. So when they drop out, the cycle sort of re-heats itself, and now their children are experiencing homelessness, and they're not able to complete their education. So what we want to do is try to help them be more successful in school. And the way that we're going to do that is we're going to do a few things to help them out. We're going to let them go to school no matter where they live or how long they've been here. So I always tell the staff when I'm training them is that if we have somebody who comes in that you call at 8:00 in the morning in the parking lot, and they want to enroll their kids that day, we're going to enroll them. We're going to let them get started. There's not a two-week waiting period until they come to Fannin County School. They pull in our parking lot, and they're ready to enroll, and we're going to enroll them. They can attend either their local school or their school of origin. We see this a lot in elementary schools because they don't have one middle school and high school. But if my child attends West Van Elementary, and we have to move in with my mother on the east side of the county, they can, my child can stay at West Van and attend school there, or if I chose, he can attend East Van. We don't make them move just because they had to move if I did homelessness. And we actually have been coordinated with Gilmore County, Union County, sort of the bordering counties, to help them stay in the home school as well. So it can cross county lines, the general rule is without 30 miles, because you don't want a child being with us for extended periods of time where it's no longer beneficial for them to stay in the home. So we do do those things. We also provide them transportation. We do this thankfully to a bidding law, who always is so great to work with me on this. We have several children that we're transporting now across county to their school of origin, so we provide them transportation. We let them enroll immediately, even if they have missing records or documents that we only require. We don't waive those requirements. They still have to provide those things. So if you ever move, you know how hard it can be to begin their adversity getting that home. So we just give them a little leg to pump for those things to us. And if there's a problem, if they've lost it and moved, then I can work with them to help them get those things that they need. We let them enroll and attend classes, which we take fully in all school activities while we're arranging for the transport breakers. And they're allowed access to all the same programs and services that are available to all other students, including transportation and any supplemental educational services they have.
They're eligible for all those services for their actual breakers here?
Yes, yes. So what we see mostly is if we have a student, you know, they come in the door, we're going to get their schedule going. Usually within 24 hours, we're able to start. And some of that depends on what time of the day they come in. If they come in at 2:00 in the afternoon, it's probably impossible for us to add to the schedule for that day. But we're really good at getting them started by the next day. And, you know, we get them added to the free lunch program as soon as I'm notified they're getting free lunches. That's also something that they qualify for. And transportation, we'll arrange that transportation, especially if it's across county. Now, that sometimes can take a couple of days, just simply because it's shuffling buses, you know, we're having to get a bus driver and coordinate that. But we're really good at getting that going quickly, and the bus driver's wonderful for me to work with. Also, I want to commend our special aid department because sometimes they just have sort of verbal, or what parents are saying, but they really do try to piece together those services so that there's not a gap in education, those children are not starting from scratch, and they're on the phone, and they're tracking down breakers as quickly as they can so that the kids are not missing out, you know, on things that they're entitled to. So our school does a really excellent job of that. And I've never had anybody come in and say, "Well, we went to enroll," and they wouldn't let us. Or, "We went to enroll because the homeless, they didn't let us do." I mean, that's never wrong. No matter who it is, we're getting our children in here, we're getting them started. And that's so important because if they've moved, and that sometimes if you're homeless, you're experiencing multiple needs. So if you miss two or three days here, and then you may be two weeks later, and you miss two or three days here, instruction time is precious, especially now that the things that kids are covering in our school, that lag in education can be huge. I mean, it can really be huge, especially if you have a child that's already struggling. So our school does a really good job of giving them a good incentive for the needs.
We found it's better, you know, we don't want to be a school system that turns children away. We found out it's better a lot of times if you don't have the registration papers or group up the papers from the school, it's still better to have that child. And our students don't know where they are until we can get that registration information in. Homeless, homeless, so that's the way we look at it. And honestly, Office of Civil Rights sent out a Dear Colleague letter, that's, how long ago was that, that's?
The latest one was about 10 years ago.
Yeah, and they said, you know, "You better not turn children away because we can't produce where they're from or document where they're from." Honestly, we never done that. So we're ahead of the curve on that because we simply feel like it is a safety procedure. You know, if you've got a child on the run or something, then we know where they are and we got them. And we can keep them safe and stood those times of day, so we don't turn children away.
Exactly. And also, for our school, we don't forget kids like today. Again, they're getting breakfast and they're getting lunch, you know. And, you know, and as far as making sure they're staying in their school of origin, if you're in a situation where you're having to pack up as you're moving, and you're probably losing things for the move, and now you're sharing a room, and your life is just sort of, and other people, isn't it nice to be able to go to the school and know that that teacher is going to be the teacher that you have? Or you're going to be sitting next to your best friend in that classroom, and that's going to be the thing. And that is so, so important. So, you know, while it's a law, it's just common sense, it's just what best for the kids. And I mean, I'll be honest with you, I think even if this wasn't required, I feel confident with any kind of school system that we knew this anyway, because we're all about what this work is. And it really shows because I've never, I mean, when I go to these conferences, I hear the school saying, "Well, I'm having this problem, they're not doing this." And I never have anything to say, ever bad, because our school just is in the backwards picture that kids are coming in, they're getting started, and if there's a need, you know, if they need something, if they need beautiful, if they need tissues, if they need backpacks, we're all scrambling, seeing what we can do to get it. So, you know, we make it happen whether it's in the, I mean, I see it every single day. We're also going to let them attend school, and we're not going to segregate them based on homelessness status. And again, that doesn't happen, it would never happen in our school system. So I feel really good about what our school does for these children. So, and we do have a policy procedure that's in place. These are the stats from last year. This is the number of students we had, 2,968, and in November, we had 414 homeless. As of today, and me and this student were just talking about that, we're about half that. So I'm feeling really encouraged. And of course, the numbers fluctuate, so I anticipate that they, you know, they will go up through the year if the circumstances change, but I really feel very positive that we're about happy where we were this time last year, so I'm good about that. It's pretty typical, though, we're still saying the same as far as the homelessness condition. Most of them are not in shelter, most of them are living with family or friends. We do have several in substandard housing, and we have some in the shelters that we have. So that's the bulk of the homeless children that we have. So we have the procedures, and I just wanted to make sure the governor paid with them. They seem to be working. I feel we've got a survey that I do at the beginning of the year, and that helps me sort of identify who might qualify. I train all the staff in the school system on it, and I get phone calls and emails on a daily basis about who might qualify, who's moved. And so I notify the nutrition office, that seems to be going smoothly. So I feel like the procedures that we have in place, we have procedures to address the agreements if the family has a agreement. Knock on wood, the years that I've been doing this, we have yet to have a agreement. So hopefully that's just something we're doing, we should do. I go meet with the parent groups to make sure that parents know what's available to them. There's posters hanging in the school, it's on the web, of course, I'm here speaking, you know, it's the same, so that y'all are aware of what's there. I really feel like we do our best to get more out, coordinate with other agencies. I go to the Family Connection meeting, we're sitting there in November about this, so I try to let the other agency in.
So do we need to approve the homeless procedures? Okay, so I would ask the board to approve the homeless procedures as presented. I will remind the board that this is part of, you know, I would hope that we can do this regardless, but this is part of our federal title, one of the program, part of the rules and requirements in order for us to proceed with that. So I'd ask the board to approve the homeless procedures as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the homeless procedures? Do I have a motion to have a second? Any discussion?
All in favor? Thank you so much. We're going to approve the purchase of drivers' head vehicle. Mr. Chairman, we talked a little bit about this on Tuesday. We've had two drivers' head vehicles, 60,007, out there now, one on eight years old. They're certainly by no stretch of imagination, or they've worn out, but anytime you have students on, make sure that you have a safe, modern vehicle, and these have had a lot of wear and tear on the front ends. The two trucks that we had now were burning fleet, and I'm going to let Mr. Long talk about this one more than that.
Last month, I asked board for permission to save the proposal. After your approval, we hand deliver proposals by all three local leaderships. At the bid opening on Monday, we had one leadership submit a proposal, which was Jim Walker, Chevrolet, and they submitted a proposal for the midsize sedan that we asked for with no exceptions. All of the, everything was met down to the service department committee verified. The sticker price on the Chevy Malibu land presented was $24,150. We asked that the driver's ed brake be installed, and was specific about which brake that we've had in the past and have the experience with. And then we asked for an extended service contract to ensure during that first three years that they're maintaining everything on the car, they do a monthly inspection on that. And we have worked with Walker and the highest, the Chevrolet truck that they use to drive our Z amount as came to that money. So they met all of the bidding requirements and were the only ones to return a bid. So I would ask that the board approve the purchase of the new Chevy Malibu for what I was going to make.
All right, I heard the recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to purchase the vehicle from Walker Chevrolet?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any SLOSS?
Yes, I'm sorry, that will be purchased and paid for out of SLOSS.
Next, we've got salvage. Last month, we came before you to ask you to surplus some odds and ends out of these fannin, and you all allowed us to do that. We received absolutely no bids for these things, five metal teacher vests, four metal filing cabinets, 12 plastic student chairs, one wooden card catalog, 23 small wooden student chairs. I can assure you, they are well-used items. Probably what we will do, the things that had metal in them, we will take those out to a recycling yard, try to sell those for whatever they're worth in bulk. But I would ask that the board approve these items out of these fannin as salvage.
Do I have a motion to approve the items listed in the East Van and the Salvage Program? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, next, we've got new security. And again, this is another SLOSS purchase that we're going to do this with, if the board will allow us to do that. With that said, I'll let Mr. Cogburn present.
The middle school came to me a month or so ago, and it asked, the panic hardware on most of the exit doors and some of the interior doors there, it was called a dog down, you can open it up and keep it open, kind of like our front door, it's operated with an Allen wrench. And their request was we change those so that a teacher, in an emergency situation, if those doors were not already locked, could unlock it with their room key in the emergency if they were opened, if you don't carry Allen wrenches, that that's in the building. So when we originally priced this, Mr. Chipon and I looked at a company that we could get the particular hardware that we've been using, and that price came up to almost $25,000 with no installation fees in it, which is why we had it on the agenda today. We were pleasantly surprised. So I looked at a company that actually had redone the doors, Blue Ridge Elementary, pipe of glass doors, and was very pleasantly surprised that the hardware we wanted with installation was far less than we could have bought the hardware for ourselves. So I'd recommend, the company's called Architec Doors, and they're going to provide us the hardware we want and installation. The total of the two pages you can see there, $14,023,23, that's for material, there should be a second page in there, the labor on that is $3,380, gives us the total of $17,403.23. And I'd recommend that the board allow us to proceed with that mark.
Heard the recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to purchase security hardware for Fannin Middle School? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Is this is the middle school only?
Correct.
Is the problem in the other schools?
The newer doors that we've installed around, like Blue Ridge, all the new doors we have, have a dog down that the teachers can utilize. We're in the process of changing some doors at the high school and the elementary, so all of them do not. So this is something that if it's successful out there, the other principals want to have it, something we can certainly do with all the other schools. Based on this, it's not nearly as expensive as it were freight was going to be, so it's something we can easily handle if the administration, the school decides they want to do it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
That is our SLOSS. All right, next would be approve change order. New CTA media center project.
When we first started doing this, the high school had asked, as Mr. Henderson mentioned on Tuesday, the high school for three years now, four years now, has been a series of dominos. Once we start a project and finish it, we have another renovation or something else to do to try to modernize the campus. When the CTA wing, the new wing was created, that left Ms. Birch's old home ec room available. The guidance office at the high school is woefully undersized. It's amazing they can do what they do with the little square footage they've got. So this proposal is to renovate the old family consumer science class, the old home ec class, and make a guidance suite out of it. There will be four offices, graduation coach, registrar, and two guidance counselors. There will also be something they have needed for a long time, which is storage of the records. Right now, from Ms. Chastain, the registrar has to go look for a student record. She has to exit the building, go downstairs to the new gym, and the records are in a vault down there, and they've got fenced in, secured area down there. This will allow her to move up, if not all of them, certainly the last 20 to 25 years worth of records, make that a much more efficient way they operate. The middle of the room, which they're calling multipurpose, will have a number of computers more than they have now, so students can do career searches, things like that, that tie also into the guidance office. And they will have a small conference room back there in the restroom, which already exists, we'll update that a little bit. So if they have to meet the parents and things, they will have a place to go. Right now, they have to find an open classroom or somewhere in the school to have a meeting if they need the parents, and it's going to be approved, their individual office is going to accommodate it. So being said, the, when this first came out, I was a little unhappy with the price with what the architects had in it, so we have to go back to the drawing board. The reason this is The reason this is a change order, this initially was gonna be done while the, uh, and the media center and the, uh, CTA wing were underway. Media center's still underway, CTA wing's complete, but that's why this is a change order. Cause we started this back then. It still can legally be called a change order, but we are still working on the media center. But the proposal is to go ahead and allow Buddy Benefield, who's the contractor of the, uh, CTA wing and media center, to, uh, do a change order. The total cost on this is seventy-two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to turn the, uh, family, the whole family consumer science, uh, into a guidance suite. And I think the board allows to proceed with this benefit.
Heard the presentation, I have a question. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hubbard, how will the records be secured?
They, uh, they'll be behind a, uh, they'll be walled in. The door will be locked as it goes in, it's a fire rated door. And the only other door will be on the inside. It'll be drywall with impact resistant drywall rather than block. And, uh, it'll be behind a fire rated wall.
Anything else?
No, I have, this is the splosh.
All in favor?
Okay, next is approve GSBA distinguished.
I'm just gonna sit here so I can scroll through this as, as we kind of enter it. Um, as you know, uh, last year, y'all completed the requirements to become a quality board. And GSBA, your school board association, uh, has requirements for different levels of recognition. So the next step was to become a distinguished board. And so during the last school year, and actually all these things had to have been completed by June thirtieth, but this year, uh, you have gone through a process to meet all the requirements to be recognized by GSBA as a distinguished school board. Tonight, we need to approve the application, which I actually have it on my computer, ready to submit after the meeting, if you approve this. And what you are, what you're stating in the application, first of all, is that we have a system strategic plan that's been adopted and is being implemented. And as you know, we, we spent a lot of time on that at lots of meetings throughout the last several years. Uh, that's a plan that kind of changes as our school improvement teams make different plans. Our district school improvement team meets and shares with you. So, uh, we do have that system strategic plan that's no blocking board. Uh, you reviewed the vision for public education in Georgia's recommendations. And you have incorporated at least five of their recommendations in our strategic plan. And I think we actually have incorporated eight of their recommendations. So you've gone above the requirement for that. Uh, you are stating that you have an internal, you've completed a self-assessment on the way the board operates. And y'all have done this every year, I think for the last three years, in December, where you look back over the past year. Uh, this year, for the first time, and we did this in May, uh, we have a committee made of community members and some assistant people to file a petition committee. They used the same self-assessment tool and went through and rated you and gave you feedback on that. So you completed that step. Uh, you also have been evaluating our superintendent on, based on a, uh, evaluation tool that is set up on our three strategic goals, which are in our system strategic plan. So that, and that's one of the requirements. So y'all have done that for more, probably five or six years. Uh, the next thing that you're stating that you could have done is that you've met all the state training requirements. Every board in Georgia, the school board members are required to complete nine hours of training each year, unless you are a new member, and then it's fifteen that first year. Uh, to become a distinguished board, a majority of the board members, instead of completing nine hours each year, must have completed twelve hours of training. And for our board, all five of you completed the extra training. So that's very admirable. The next thing we're signing off on is that we are accredited with all agencies that are applicable. Uh, we just were recently in the spring, uh, credited again by some association of colleges and schools. And we were, uh, received glowing report from them. Uh, we also keep the Georgia Accrediting Commission accreditation current too. And I think it's always with high quality or, or something. We, we get a great rating out of them too. Uh, the next thing is that, um, if you're recognized as a distinguished board, you are all agreeing that if another governance team, another school board decides to go through this process and wants assistance, that you're willing to help other boards become distinguished boards. You're acknowledging that the, you're willing to implement and maintain all the criteria we require for the distinguished board level. And, uh, this can be taken away by GSBA for good cause. If things begin to go wrong, which they won't expect with our board, uh, but they have that in there so that boards realize they can't lose the, uh, the accreditation if things don't go like they should. You're also stating that you understand the renewal cycle. And the change in this new format is we have had to renew every year. And of course, last year was the first year of, of the new guidelines. This is the first time you will have been recognized as a distinguished board. The old recognition we had was board distinction. And you still had an annual application. Once you're recognized as a distinguished board, that lasts for two years. But we will have an annual checklist next fall that we have to send in. And basically, when you approve this, you're just stating that you have met all of those guidelines and would like to be recognized.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to approve distinguished board applications that we can send to George Goodwood's Association for Recognition.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the, the other ones in the board for the willingness to pursue this and to prove the, you know, the effort, the fourth effort to acquire the effort of training. We expect the very best from our teachers and our administrators and we want to be the best we can do. And I would say this also, this process certainly helped me. Having extensive reviews of our vision and mission, whatever the sex folks gave me in interviews, having gone through the process, certainly, certainly made that process easier for me. My, my hat's off to the school board members, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, any other discussion? All in favor?
All right, request to approve the construction manager at risk for Eastman Elementary re-roofing project.
Ever since we built the football stadium, the method of construction that we've used and have been very happy with it is a CM at risk, construction manager at risk. It's a general contractor and, uh, what it allows us to do is to, uh, as much as possible, use subcontractors that we know and trust. Uh, and we get better control over the job, we get things done in a timely manner. Since most of the people that we use as subs live in the county, uh, they'll work weekends, they'll work nights, they'll work well together. And it's just a wonderful way to get things done without all the fuss and muss when we get usually a general contractor. One of the things we've done last splosh and this splosh is start working on repairing and replacing roofs. We redid the roofs at the high school, we redid, uh, the roofs at the middle school. Blue Ridge, we just finished this summer the back roof. Previous summer, we had done the front roof. The only two buildings left are East Fannin and West Fannin. East Fannin is the worst of the two. And so what we're proposing to do, we sent out a proposal for people who wanted to, uh, to be a construction manager at risk. The architect wrote up a, uh, spec sheet proposal and they had to list the percentage their fee would be off the total price of the job. And as it turns out, uh, we had four roofing contractors and one general contractor come to a required pre-bid meeting. Only one of those contractors turned in a proposal for CM at risk. It's Buddy Benefield Construction, which we have used on a number of jobs. And they did the lowest rate possible, which was seven and a half percent combined. So I would recommend that they, uh, the board allow us to proceed in pricing and allow Buddy Benefield Construction, the construction manager at risk, to re-roof, uh, the roof at East Fannin and West Fannin.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right, next, Mr. Chairman, it's local board training. Of course, on July one, we turned over a new year, which starts this block getting a board train. And I will let Ms. Walton, uh, show you your options and also tell you that we don't know exactly what's gonna be required.
That's true.
So.
Um, Ms. Panar was talking about the training. It's time to open the discussion about what we're interested in for this particular school here. These are the course offerings from Pioneer Risa. You may look at those and say, those look very familiar. Um, I've seen those before and participated in those before. I talked to Mr. Old, who is the director at Pioneer Risa. He told us that we can still use this list, but if, and keep in mind, it's sort of like when you go to the conference in December or GSBA, there are always updates. There's always new information that's shared. So it may be a topic that you've previously visited, but there would be new information to share on that. And also think in terms of since we are looking at the charter system, um, initial charter system with this direction, that we're knowing that we could keep that mindset when we review this and combine the two and look at this from the standpoint of probably redo the charter system. So we have these to pick from. We have nine hours that we know that will be required for you. We think it could be twelve hours for the majority of the board. That decision will be made in October. And then we would know for sure. There is a deadline in October when we submit the plan. We've got a couple of options. You could select, if you're interested in the training, uh, in December, sponsored by GSBA for the law conference, that's a six-hour training. Then you could have the addition of one more training, three hours to make nine. And if you found out later that there was an additional requirement, you could add one to that.
An additional requirement for George Goodwood Association of Distinguished Boards?
Uh, I guess I could have thrown this in when I was thinking, if you don't mind. Uh, they are fixing, as they have revamped the distinguished board, uh, program two or three years ago, so that now we're in this phase of it. When I was trying to find out if it would be twelve hours every year now for you to stay a distinguished board, uh, she emailed me today that they are revising the guidelines again. So we won't find out until sometime in October what the new program looks like. So that's why we're a little unsure if you'll have to continue doing that extra three hours or if it'll be something new.
So this is just up for consideration, because you start thinking that if you want to participate in December, if not, or if you want to strictly do what we've done for the past couple of years and do everything here with Pioneer Risa. You know, it's obviously your choice, it's your preference. It's what you think is the most beneficial to continue this board. Also, keep in mind, we're not positive as to what, um, the changes that might take place. But GSBA, GSBA has always told us that any time we modify, add to our plan, our work type of price. So it can, it's living, just as, just for your consideration. And you can share, you can talk about it, something you can, you can think on and you can come back and read this thing. Charge prior to the next meeting.
Does anybody have anything with what discussion?
I ask, Ms. Walton, obviously we've had some of the training and some there. Uh, the, the three-hour training on analyzing, let us look at what we have this year.
Did communicating school system message?
School system message. Uh, we've had training on that before. Obviously, there's things that go beyond, but we've had training also, you can even pick the same subject if you want to go more in-depth. Uh, the same training as we've had in the past. Uh, there might be a portion of it you want to go into, uh, or, or look at it from a different direction. And they can do that also. So just keep that in mind. You don't have to go through and cross off the things you've already had.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that the quality of the Pioneer Risa training was excellent. But, um, the change in legal environment session that, that GSBA does down in Atlanta, the Department of Harlem, representing was also very insightful and helpful. The actual attorneys that, uh, that represent us in cases when we need them. That was very helpful also, very important.
I think this is real life situations.
However, the legislature meets in January, so a lot of the legal issues that will be decided with education may not be relevant until April. So, um, it's something else.
Is there a way to get video of that conference they do on what Mr. Brown was talking about?
Not what you pay. But, you know, we.
Unless you pay.
You can always ask. I can ask and the answer will be yes or no. That's true.
What discussion?
Okay, thank you.
Facilities planning, of course, that would cover core, doing core, standard core.
I'm sorry?
That would cover the, the new upcoming, or standard core.
What, which one?
Facilities.
Facilities planning.
Uh, that would be, that could be more with buildings and campuses. You have lots of options and this is just for you to start thinking about, you don't have to make a decision now.
Of course, you know, you pick up on call myself, Ms. Walton, we'll be happy to talk options. Just look at it when we get back next time and we're probably gonna start getting played again.
Thank you.
Next is personnel, uh, Mr. Chairman. And as always, I would refer to the board as to whether the respective session is needed or not.
Very good. We're okay.
Okay, uh, we've got a couple of resignations. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mrs. Shannon Schoeffe effective ten, ten, fourteen. And one, the Kane Burley, effective nine, twenty, ten, fourteen. I'd ask the board to send those resignations as presented.
Do I have a motion to accept those resignations? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Uh, we would like to transfer Amber Mitchell, uh, to the parent liaison.
Do I have a motion to, uh, transfer Amber Mitchell to the parent liaison? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, recommendations, uh, Daphne Cash and John Demare for custo.
Do I have a motion to have Daphne Cash and John Demare as custo? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Next, recommendations for substitute teachers, Janice Lidle, Carrie Manier, and Stacy Stanford.
Do I have a motion to hire Janice Lidle, Carrie Manier as substitute? Stacy Stanford as substitute teacher? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Next, for substitute nutrition, Sandra, here's a gonna make you like Junior Sam. Do I have a second? Uh, Al, Robin Kane, Ron the Calmoon, Ferry Murphy, and Tammy Stan.
I'm not even gonna try, I have a motion.
Sandra.
Do I have a second, Sam? All in favor?
I don't know about this next recommendation. Then, then the G Z L, the substitute Claire.
We have a motion. Do you have that? We have that motion, do I have a second? All in favor?
Yes, I don't think that she wants to come back and fill in some of your happy Amber. Next, superintendent's comments. Uh, I will try to be brief. I'm very proud of this school board. You once again have shown your dedication to excellence and to this community for pursuing the distinguished school board status. You know, that's not anything that I came and asked this board to do. Uh, I don't even know really honestly how many of our citizens realize that that accreditation ranking exists. Uh, this was something that was purely driven within this board. And it was for the purposes of making sure that we do the best that we can for our children and presenting, uh, our best side forward to teachers. We, I think it's Mr. Brown or, or Mr. Stanley said, I can't remember who, we expect the best of our teachers. So y'all expect the best of yourselves as a board, and I appreciate that. Honestly, y'all are a great group to work with. Each one of you bring strength to the table. And I learn from y'all every day. And I appreciate the counsel and I appreciate the job that you do. And I appreciate the way you work for children, this student system. So for that, I say, uh, carry on and let's always make sure that we pursue the best that is out there. Thank you, I appreciate you. I appreciate the people in this system, uh, for the support that they give our children. I appreciate. I appreciate everyone who works in this system, and I appreciate our support in this system. That said, this is a tape.
I'm just going to go ahead and say, on this anniversary of what we all experienced 13 years ago, it certainly is a pleasure being here with a community like this, and we all are colleagues, but I feel like friends also, and I'm very appreciative of the school system and the people that we have here, and that's all I'm going to say. Mr. President?
Well, I'd like to thank Ms. Cantrell, you know, in refreshing our memory of this situation with the homeless. Sometimes we forget that all of our students don't have advantages, and I'm so proud of our free breakfast and lunch in those cases for those children, because I learned a long time ago that some kids come to school to eat, and that's tough sometimes. Mr. Benefield, I appreciate you and all the things you've done for us, and we're about to embark upon something else. And I was, today I was watching CNN, and I realized that today is a very special day, and it brought to mind that I really need to be thanking some teachers, because thanks to a high school history teacher, I know, or I did know, all three verses of the Star Spangle Banner. Now I might know one, if I'm lucky. There was a time when I knew the Gettysburg Address, and I wasn't sure that I could get through this without having it written down, but I thought this was so appropriate, given on November 19th, 1863, over 150 years ago, and yet it still resonates and remains so true. And this is what he said a few days after the war. And this is appropriate for even that, that we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation shall have a birth, a new birth of freedom, and that this government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from this earth. I think it's very appropriate for today.
Very good. If you want your heart warmed here in Fann County, be at any of our schools early in the morning, and you'll find that we still have a moment of silence, and we still salute our flag. It's very touching. I had forgotten that. You know, we hear a lot of discussions about people from about the Bible out, prayer out. A moment of silence is powerful, when you hear all the little children reverence, and the teachers maintain this respect. It's beautiful to watch. That's Fann County.
I appreciate the reference to Gettysburg Chris. Such a touching, touching text. My daughter's in seventh grade, and I need to spend, like, written principal issue challenged to the students, anybody memorizing reciting Gettysburg Chris would get a $5. My daughter's in seventh grade, still has that $5. But their hearts are all a little heavy, reflecting on 9/11. If you recall how the country pulled together in the wake of that roofing event, I think there's a parallel with that relationship here in Fann County. And I made a comment at our call meeting, but it was not well attended, it took a lot of time, but a lot of our department heads were not here, but I just want to thank you for your willingness to pull together in light of our very favorable financial picture in our budget that we recently approved. Your willingness to pull together when times were tough, when the austerity comes really is so hard, and you all very quietly and generously took five days of furlough time, and I suspect that most of you just worked right off through that, but your willingness to pull together, and that's throughout our system, it's not just your department, it's our teachers as well. I didn't get any complaints from my team, in fact, I got a lot of thanks for maintaining those days, and those days of obstruction. It's just such an honor to be a part of this system, where everybody values the system, they value the education, they value our students, all of us, while we're here. Thank you so much for all that you do and your willingness to really put the interest to our system and the forthright, and the sacrifices you make to accomplish that. It's just been great, as the chairman said, it's great to be a part of this community and a part of this system, it's a great place.
How does any of that do? Thank you, I'll take it.
For you, gentlemen, one change to the budget or agenda amendment, we just pulled it off the agenda, it was our.
Our fiscal year 13 audit, it's slowly working its way through Atlanta, and all is well. We'll have good news at some point in time to report, but it looks like it will be next month that we will share that with you all.
Now, I told you they were a little slow getting it done. Their timeline was off of getting it mailed to us. Usually when we send a letter back to them saying we agreed to the audit, they get it back pretty quickly. We just knew we'd have it for tonight. That's not the case, and we're not going to present something that we have until we have it planned. We know what the results are in our file, so we'll wait till next month. So I didn't want you to have to think we were trying to do anything underhand, if we're hiding, like, we just didn't have to file a report to be able to put them together with y'all. So with that said, we have that.
Excellent. Do you have a motion to adjourn? Have a second.
Second.
I'll take it.